Five thirty, January twenty first. And we've got one topic of equity, right? And first thing, well, this is the conversation I think we wanted to have. We talked about kind of our goals for this meeting at the board meeting. And Sean and I chatted with Steve and agenda setting and what we're trying to accomplish. I think we just approved the, hey JP, we just started. We approved the, sorry, the comprehensive equity diversity inclusion plan in our last meeting. And it's very wide ranging and fantastic in terms of the goals that are outlined in there. But as we've all said, we can't, we can either on everything in there all at the same time. So we need to prioritize. And so I think one of the things that we wanted to talk a bit about tonight with our directors and Matt and Chase are, you know, what are we doing in the district around some of the things that are covered in the equity plan? What are some themes and trends and activities you're seeing, you know, in our schools or in our community that you think might point to some additional work that we might want to do from a prioritized standpoint? And should we, you know, talk about what some of those things might look like? And then the final thing we're going to do is just to make sure that we're good on what our role is to all of this because we want to be supportive, we want to, you know, provide the guidance and the direction, but we certainly don't want to be down and under managing, you know, parts of all this. So this is, I think, a conversation on the group plan. What do we have underway? What are some themes and trends that we're seeing happen in our schools and community that we might want to think about some re-personalization from how we want to address the matters? And that's, I think, maybe where we want to start. Others with me now, Sean, if you can try and add into what we're trying to accomplish tonight. It's just, it's to help prioritize the work within the equity plan as we're on the front based on what we're seeing in our schools.
Yeah, I think that, you know, there's been, you know, a handful of specific incidents that have been brought to board members' attention specifically, but, you know, plenty of other things that are, you know, brought to the attention of administration long before we hear about it. And I think that's fine in most cases, right? I think we've talked about, you know, where is it appropriate or not appropriate to let the board know? Where do you put that line, which is almost a possible thing to decide on where that line should be? But I think even as Charlie mentioned at the board table last week, right? It's not, let's cast blame on past things, but how we move forward, right? And that's how our plan is going to help us do that. So I think it's more kind of broad strokes, like what things can we help with as a board? Or what kind of direction can we provide and what things are being done, you know, from the administration level to kind of systematically address things as opposed to just the one-off type of things.
Well, and that's, that's the other thing from a board member's standpoint, we do get these, we have these flashes. Something happens and, you know, there's a lot of attention, there's a lot of dialogue, a lot of discussion, and people come to us, and we're at meetings, and they hear these things, but without kind of that broader context of what's happening every day and the themes and the trends, I don't want to overreact on this one, a one incident. That could be a one-off and it's been addressed and there's no other concern that it's going to repeat, but maybe other things that I'm less aware of that might, should be driving and prioritized work. So that's kind of what I'm looking forward to. I don't want to overreact to a good one incident if it's isolated. I want to, I want to address the more systemic things that we actually didn't really progress on.
And I don't want to overreact, but I think sometimes we, we have to react. And sometimes if we don't know anything, like, how do we react? And, you know, I think, you know, if we say things like, trust us, that's never received very long. Like, oh, no, we, we got this. We know what we're doing, even if we might feel like we're on a good path, which that's how I feel, like, you know, we're on a good path, but we're just slowing that path. But people are coming with, like, it's about time, when are you going to fix this? I'm not being listened to, my kids aren't being listened to, this is just more of the same. And it's hard to know how to respond to that when we may not even know what they're talking about.
Well, I like what you said about responding because I think that's what this conversation gives us a chance to do and not to react things necessarily as bad, but instead of a quick reaction or overreaction, I think the conversation allows us to make sure we're delivering thoughtful and realistic, right? And that we have a well-thought-out plan. And Janet mentioned about being able to come back to the equity plan and where's, where some of those things fit. And I think the reason we have the goals we have in the equity plan are because some of the themes and trends we either internally have seen or even our stakeholder groups outside have said, hey, these are things that are recurring, right? And these are things that continue to go on or we continue to hear about. And so one incident may be more public and catch more attention than another, but I think the goals are stated in the plan because of data points we have from community members or things like our student climate experience survey data that shows us, hey, these things must be happening on some level, right? If kids are reporting this type of an experience in our environment. And so, like I said, I, I don't think we want to minimize those, those big experiences, those big flashes, but we also need to stay rooted in some of the work in the direction you guys provide to us about where our focus efforts need to be, right? And I think that's what this conversation allows us to do. When I think about probably the reason we're having this conversation, it's really around that goal three, right? About how do we create equitable, inclusive and supportive school environments? Because if we're hitting that out of the park and doing a good job with that, some of these other things hopefully occur less or never occur, right? That we never have those experiences for our kids in school. Of course, we still deal with adolescents, right? We know they're not going to probably be perfect, but we want to have a, a safe environment where, where students aren't going to school and experiencing that type of, of treatment or seeing that from their peers. And so to me, to answer your question in kind of a generalized way, it's really, I mean, those are the themes and trends we're seeing. I mean, and those are what's written in the goals, right? We see structurally disadvantaged students achieving at less rates because we think there's an opportunity gap that leads to that achievement gap. We see disparate discipline. We've talked a lot about that one. But I really think some of that disparate discipline also comes from goal three, right? Around how do we have supportive and inclusive environments where maybe we head off of those discipline events from ever occurring or some of the instances we run into. So, and then the fifth goal, I think, is an important one too, that talks about stakeholder engagement with parents, students and community members as well about, you know, how are we communicating back in port as a school community to some of our important stakeholder groups and to our parents? That the experience they may be, may be coming home and, and talking about may not be what we perceive as the experience, right? And if there's a disconnect there, then we need to try to understand that disconnect and improve it and improve their experience there. So those would be a couple of my initial thoughts. You know, from a report out structure, I think what we planned with equity plan was to kind of go goal by goal and share with you, you know, some of the work underway in some greater detail. That's what we had shared with that equity plan. Maybe from this conversation tonight, you give us some idea about which goal we should start with. We had talked about taking it chronologically, one, two, three, but if there's some chance to respond to a, a current situation, maybe that's starting with goal three and coming back with, okay, what's the current work underway? What does this, you know, situation or situations allow us to maybe move on a little bit sooner in that regard? And I can talk through, you know, a couple of those pieces loosely if that would be helpful tonight, but that would be my suggestion is, okay, well, which of these do we think has the greatest urgency and which one would you like to hear more about first? And then if we don't think we're going far enough when we do a report out, that's a conversation we can have too.
I, I think goal three is super, you know, I, it feels to me that if we can address some of the things around student mental emotional wellbeing and reducing building harassment and inclusion, some of those things, I feel like we'd start moving the needle on the disproportionality potentially and also even getting to the opportunity gap. Kids are not engaging in learning because they're upset or worried or, you know, other things are happening at school that they aren't feeling included or they're feeling, you know, having negative experiences is going to get in the way of them learning.
Right. I always say it's like a Maslow's hierarchy needs thing, right? I mean, if we can't do those foundational pieces, how do we ever get to some of those more significant learning pieces, right? If those needs aren't being met.
Yeah, and I mean, I would, for me, two and three kind of go hand in hand.
Exactly.
So that, I mean, because we know in, based on those numbers that we get, that we're seeing that disproportionality in discipline and how does that tie to creating equitable, inclusive environment? So I would like, if possible, attention to be focused there.
And I'll just say that to me, the way we would reduce the disproportionality, hand creating those environments is through our cultural responsive policies. So, I mean, I guess it's, you know, I mean, that's, you know, how do we reduce disproportionality? We're going to have different practice, different policy. And, and that's, and I, you know, however we go through this, and I think, I think as we go through this plan and we deal with it in a very tangible way where you guys are saying, here's how we're implementing it, you know, I think we're going to see, that's going to give us, I know from somebody who looked through this and helped develop this, I think that's where the rubber hits the road and you start to recognize, you know, maybe some of these goals are more like one goal.
It's hard to separate, right?
It is hard to separate, but I, I mean, I think it's, you know, if we're hearing this down here at the, you know, students contact us or parents contact us or we're hearing just rumors of things out of the media, and then we as a board have set sort of a policy that's, that we as a board are like, you know, here's as a district what we believe, these are our values. And I guess I'm just interested in how does that work for all of the people who have to do the work? Because people will tell us, well, if here's how the board is, that's not my experience in school, so what's wrong? And that's where it's like, okay, I don't know what's wrong. I'll have to.
And that's why I like the three E in particular. I remember the conversation around that when we worked on the plan, JP, because it really talked about, you know, identifying the role all the way down to the student level, right? I mean, what's the, the board level, the district admin team level, the building level, admin team level, the teachers in the classroom and then the students, you know? And trying to think about, you know, that word accountability throughout the structure and say, if this is what we believe, then how are we seeing it, you know, on all of those levels and what's the commitment to all of those? But I like how you started tying them together too, right? Because it's hard to talk about, you know, creating an equitable, inclusive and supportive school environment without teachers that are culturally proficient or administrative staff that's not culturally proficient. And so all of those are linked together in some way, shape or form. That's why it will be hard when we do talk about a goal at a time to, to just talk about that one. We'll really be talking in other areas too because the work complements and even some of the action steps that we're working on, you'll see in multiple areas, right? Because the, it overlaps. So I think just another probably context piece is, you know, we were involved in that implicit bias training for a three-year period with all of our staff. This year, outside of the LGBTQ work that's continued, that was identified through some of that UI Policy Center work, we really worked to make sure we had a, a solid new equity plan and that'll be our work is, is kind of tabulating the work that's together and continuing some of the pieces that are in place. But moving forward, I think what we've started to identify too is really culturally, I don't want to, cultural competency, I guess, is, is the word or proficiency, you know, whatever phrase you want to attach to it. That's the work we think needs to have for teachers, but then also students. And so how do you drill it down to the student level a little bit too? And I think that's the area where you'll probably see us come back and talk to you some more about is that's what we really see probably the next professional or in for staff and students is around that culturally proficient piece or competent piece. You know, people get hung up sometimes. That's why I'm switching between the words on exactly what that means. And we'll have some definitions and come back from the Equity Advisory Committee around some of these terms that help us all have a common understanding too. But we really see that as probably the intentional race layer of this conversation that needs to happen because there's a lot of things in the equity plan that cover a lot of different parts, but I think in particular, we're here tonight because of somewhat of a race issue and our equity plan obviously has to address and account for that in a very intentional way. And I would see that as some of that work as well.
I'm pretty much okay with the direction I think you're suggesting we should take. I am apprehensive about things like promoting, having goals, things that are worded as promoting, developing, supporting, those are goal, goal words. The number of kids that get sent to an office, the number of kids who are proficient, those are definitely measurable things. So in terms of putting the whole plan together, I'm thinking that I'm going to be looking for measurable things that may come from your, you know, or there may be a, a agreement among board members that we're going to get at those measurable things do, by doing things that sound to me a little sort of squishy maybe.
Right, and I think part of what you'll see is, I think that's a really good point, Charlie, because those all sound great in theory, you know, but you don't want it just to be speak or just talk, right? And so how do we get down into that? And so one of the things you guys saw in the public facing part of the document that were released already is the baseline measures or the outcome measures. So where are we starting and then what would we like to see? What would we like to see those outcome measures change? How do we increase outcome? What'll come back as we break down these goals or actual metrics, right? And so the metric should be the data points we look at to say, are we seeing movement? Have we seen movement on, you know, fewer failing grades? You know, if we talk about an opportunity gap question, what have we seen in course involvement data, you know, that would show us we're closing opportunity gaps? In particular, discipline, you mentioned a couple of things around office referrals or, you know, suspension data, you know, some of those things we have seen probably more readily. Ones like create an equitable, inclusive and supportive school environment, I think those metrics would be a little bit more interesting breakdown, right? What are the things we're looking for in that end? And I think that's part of what our team is also working on is to say, how do we identify those measures so if we know that we're moving or that we're just staying stagnant?
And I agree with that. What I hope doesn't happen is we say we want to reduce suspensions and all that happens is people just stop getting suspended without, you know, because I know we can, you can do that, I mean, competitive data anyway we want to get at the hard number we're asking for. And so not to not have them, we need those metrics, but I also, I guess the squishy part that I want to know is especially leadership, do they believe it? Are they bought in to this concept? Do they understand if we just talk about race right now, do they understand that it's an issue, that, that however you want to define it, this racism is a systemic problem? And if we're the system, we're part of the problem and that we're, we can, we don't have staff saying, well, it's not me. I'm not a racist, you know? Because that was the point of the implicit bias training. And I know that wasn't perfect and, and there were lots of issues with it being, you know, it's hard to provide quality 10-hour professional level experience for our staff when we're breaking it up over chunks. But I guess that's the point of saying, hey, now everybody's trained in implicit bias. So at least we're, and I get, you know, we've got all of our staff, which is a lot of people, but especially if we're building leadership, our principles and our system principles, you know, those are the people that we can more easily say, this is the lens that we view this through. And if you don't accept the lens, I find it hard that people are going to do, do the work with a genuine gut level, like, wow, there's something wrong here, I have to fix it, rather than a defensive, you know, I'm not the problem, they keep making all these things, we're going to get a new board in a few years and then, because that's just a stereotype in education that boards and policymakers come up with ideas and it's going to be gone. Eventually, this too shall pass, no child left behind. Eventually, it'll be gone and we'll do what we need to do in the meantime, but.
And we'll still do 50% proficiency.
Yeah, it won't change the needle much, though. That's the, the part that I don't know that we can get a metric on, but where I sort of trust staff to say, you know, maybe so you take our culture and climate survey data and you see where the hot spots are and then you guys are going in to say, hey, Principal X, what's going on? Where, you know, because that's a, it's harder to gauge, but there's some people who kind of get it and then there's people who are like, not me, that's not my problem. I, I don't see, however that's phrase, I mean, I've heard it a lot of times of, I'm race neutral, I don't really think that way, and I think it's hard to move forward with this work if we don't have that sort of fundamental kind of gut level belief in, in the lens. And, and it's, and I don't think it's just because this board was elected and we're doing this work. Everything I've seen, right, we're basing this all on some strong evidence and data that's out there. That's not, that's, some of us maybe if we've worked in the field or, or we've lived it kind of know, you know, like when I would talk to some of my students about the way they were treated, have you ever been followed in a grocery store? And they, or, you know, a store, and they look at me like, what a dumb question, like, of course, like, why wouldn't, and it's just such a fundamental assumption, whereas some people are like, who don't have these experiences, like, well, that doesn't, no, that's not real, that doesn't happen in our city. And one is based in experience and, and reality and one is based in just an idea that doesn't have any basis. So, so rather than just being a board that happens to be equity-driven and, and maybe politically motivated to do this work, it, it feels to me like it's founded in a lot deeper, deeper understandings, actual data, you know, lots of evidence out there that these things are an issue. And so do we have people who like believe it? Hey, this is a systemic problem and if I'm part of the system, I'm part of the problem, which means I'm part of the solution. And that to me is the powerful part when people can say, okay, I recognize how I'm a part of the problem and then it can be fixed. But if we have a lot of people saying, yeah, it's not my problem, I don't think that way, I don't, since I vote this way, I don't really have these beliefs and I think, and I don't know, I guess that's what I'm asking you.
I, sure, I, I mean, I think that.
Sure, I think to me that's a question of candidate administration, steel, basically the set of principles we have to actually accomplish these goals that are expressed in the equity plan.
Well.
So do you want to go or?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to JP's first and then, and then come back. And then, we, we believe that, that the administration, both from, you know, what we, what we see, but then also what we've heard in their engagement, that they, that they are committed to doing this work. They understand the importance and they don't just understand the importance because it's coming from the board, but because they do believe it's the right thing to do for our students. And you're right that it's hard to show that metric, but one thing I think that we're trying to do to, to do that is to have the administrators walk that walk in terms of training and being involved and it's not just a training that's done to the staff or to this part, right? Having people engage in that and so that we're all learning together as part of that. I think one of the challenges that comes in is then when there is an incident or something happens that, you know, people are unhappy with, there sometimes can be an overreaction to, well, if that administrator cared more, this wouldn't have happened, right? And that's not the reality. We, we know that in some of our schools, that sometimes that, that doesn't, that narrative doesn't match. And so it is how do we respond? What are the things we do? And I think that's where you see some of that care, JP, and some of the, how do they bounce back from some of that? And then it is incumbent on Matt, Amy, me and Steve to go out and have those, those difficult conversations with those administrators and, and start talking to them. And we do it in a variety of ways, whether it's a student incident, which would be maybe more Matt and Amy's side, or whether it's Nick and Jeremy, Jeremy and I pulling their staffing data and saying, hey, you've had 10 openings in the last three years and you haven't hired one diversity candidate. Tell me about that. I mean, we, we have to be willing to, to have those conversations and I, I think that is something that, that, that we're willing to do and, but they're uncomfortable, right?
And why, why are they uncomfortable?
Well, you know, I.
Charlie, I think as much as we're leaders and supervisors, nobody ever enjoys that conversation, right? And I think the thing where Chase says, it, it, obviously we all have to have those conversations and that's what we're here to do and that's part of the job being a leader. But when we say, do they believe in it and things like that? I mean, I can tell you when those events happen or when public fights happen in their buildings, the administrators are, they're wounded in a sense, right? I mean, they, they feel sick that those things happen in their building. They don't want those things occurring either. And I think like Chase that it's more a matter of what do we see in the response, right? I mean, that's where I, okay, a negative event happened, how do we then come together as a school community and respond to it? Or do we just try to say, well, that happened, we're just going to keep moving on, right? I mean, that's where I think the tell is in, are they really committed and believing in the work? I don't think it's a leadership team issue about if we believe in the work. I think it's about how do we impact the system to get different results than we continually see. And that system is huge and it's hard to change. And I think that's where Chase says, you know, when we have to pull data and look at it like that or go back and say, you know, you might have needed to rethink how we handled the student situation or now let's talk about what we do to move forward. I mean, that's where our job is to help push their thinking. Their job is building principles, is to help push their staff's thinking, right? A lot of times principals end up dealing with the things brought to them, right? And so that's an interaction that's happened somewhere else in the building between a staff member and a student or between a couple of students, but they're responsible for the culture of that building. So what can they do to influence the system again? And so we spend a lot of time on those system level conversations. I think, you know, what everybody is hungry for are answers to those questions, right? And I think that's where we're trying to get to. I don't think it's a, we don't believe it's upon us. I mean, they see it every single day. And so it's, it's how do we impact and start to get different results? How do we get to start to have a positive school culture? How do we impact? You know, I could take the math example of what we've worked on as a math team and, and wanting to have different achievement results for our kids and understanding and being committed to the fact that we need to do something different on the opportunity end if we're really going to see that, right? Knowing that if I want a different school environment, I'm going to have to probably do some outside the box things and look at some PBIS models in our high schools, right? That we haven't seen before. So I think having a risk to make those change, knowing all the while, they're going to be on the front lines of also the pushback from privilege whenever we make any of those changes, right?
From parents.
From parents of privilege. And so when they make those changes and step into those uncomfortable areas, that's where they also need support to know that they're being backed up. And, and honestly, I see that as our role as the district team and as the board, right? Is to know if we're serious about this change, not everybody's going to be happy about the change and think it's a great idea because it's all those unsaid things, you know, that are out there that we're up against sometimes. They won't say them out loud until maybe the change starts to affect how their student receives the school experience and how some things start to look different. You guys live that with the boundary conversation.
That's what I was going to say.
And this conversation is now is going to get real close to the student level on, on a multiple levels if we're serious about some of the things outlined in this plan. So when you ask where we need support from the board or where I think our building teams need support from the district administrative team is to continue to back them and support them as they make those changes and work through their concerns. I can detail, I'll give one example and then I'll, I'll try to be quiet a little bit. But we had a building principal want to make a change to the release at the end of the school day about when the buses would pull out of the parking lot because often times what happened is we'd have groups of students waiting, right? And not necessarily the students were doing anything wrong, but they would receive negative interactions potentially from adults. They would maybe get into some negative interactions with kids because it's unstructured time. Adolescence in unstructured time, not always a good recipe for success, right? So trying to reduce that, well, by doing that, it put a schedule tight on some orchestra students to get out from their orchestra class at the end of the day to get their instrument to get to their locker, to get to the bus. Three or four parents about forced the change of this principal to go back to the other way where all the while we were avoiding maybe a potential suspension, negative interactions, you know, from adults to kids. And so that's one where we just had to support the principal and say, you're doing the right things for the right reasons. You're trying to keep your kids from getting into a situation that could potentially negative for them, whether it's with a peer or with a staff member. And so just because we have a couple of parents upset that their kid's a little stressed on the time to get to the bus, we're not going to change the whole system because those are too very vocal, you know, individuals.
So can those parents and the board get together and the parents hear from the board that this is a good idea, we're going to do it?
I'm not sure what you're asking, sorry.
Well, it's, instead of the principal having to deal with the parents on their own, have arranged for the board and the parents to get together and the parents can hear from the board that the principal had, has the best idea.
In all honesty? In all honesty? I think the idea of providing that support to the principal and if Matt or Steve or the principal comes to the board, that encouragement that they're doing the right thing, because I understand what you're saying, Charlie, but that's the exact opposite of what we want. We don't want community members every time they're unhappy with the decision that the principal's made, going around the initiative team and coming to the board because.
For the administration.
The authority and the intentions of the principal or the teacher or whoever, I mean, we, we have to support through policy, prioritization, these kinds of meetings where we're very publicly saying, this is what we believe, these are our values, these are the goals of the district and we support everyone out in the building who is pushing these goals forward. You know, I, I, we wouldn't even entertain either those kinds of complaints.
Well, they'll come up during the commentary.
Oh, yeah, and that's fine, but I, I think if we open that Pandora box, all of our work would be dealing with parents that have an issue with either the administration, our administration, teachers, because that's just, it, it would be never ending.
And that's, I'm fine with knowing that the best way to handle that from the board level is for the board to be very clear that for the administration that we're, we're supporting you, right?
That'd be great, but if we make that ask, right? And that's where we tell the board that they would, could be most supportive of us, then there's a level of communication incumbent on us. And I don't know if that's this conversation or a different conversation where if that's happening, we know that's bubbling, we need to give you a heads up. So you're not caught off guard by parents coming to you and saying, hey, you're, we're making this dismissal, they're making this dismissal change and being all upset because then you don't have the backstory of, of why we're doing it, right? And so we put you in a bad spot. And so we put you in a bad spot. And so, yes, I think that's the best way to move forward in a team and the support for the building principal or a teacher or for the admin, but then we need to do our part to make sure that we don't leave you flat footed.
Because, because you guys could get into a constant liquid flow in board.
Right.
And I don't think that's what we're asking for, I'm certainly not. But there are certain, because how we respond, I think you were talking about that, Matt, how, this stuff's gonna happen. No matter how well intentioned we are, no matter how hard we work on our culture, things are gonna happen that are gonna be disappointing or, you know, counter to our culture. And how we respond is as important as anything else. And then, so if an incident occurs, if we do know that it happened and here's how we're responding, then that helps us be able to cut through misinformation or sort of the one sided stories that always come up in these kinds of situations. And, but it's finding the balance and, and, and we're gonna get some light, we're gonna get some wrong or the misses. I mean, that's just how the nature of this stuff is. We think this is not gonna become a big public thing and it might escalate. So I, I, I don't wanna burden you with over communicating because I know that can become a, a full-time job. But, you know, and we also need to get, know to be proactive, hey, I'm going to this meeting. Are there any, is there anything going on I should know about? Or, I mean, we all have a calendar of the various committees and community groups that we attend. And maybe we just need to pay a little bit more close attention to what's happening on a, on a Monday night and going, well, okay, I'm gonna give these guys a heads up, we're walking into this meeting, that this is bubbling. Or we take the, the incentive or the proactives to call our guys up and say, hey, what's going on? I'm getting ready to walk into this meeting, is there anything I need to know, we need backstory context, that'd be helpful. I, I mean, I almost feel like it's easier for us to ask the question because y'all are just so incredibly busy and, and, and I mean, it could be a five minute phone conversation, you know what I mean?
I think there are some norms that have, you know, gotten created that maybe aren't the best norms around that. Like you said, I mean, I do think there's some things as Chase was talking about, we can easily pick the phone and say, hey, you know, one, you know this is out there, this is going on. Other things we might not catch and you might get a community commenter that comes up and complains about some. And then I think what we would just say is just ask the question before we agenda, you know, before we, you know, have a, a reaction to it. First ask the question, let us tell you at least what we've done. And then if you're not happy with it, then let's talk about it further. But I think that's the, that is a somewhat difficult situation for us sometimes when we know community commenters are standing up there and telling you guys half the story and it's like, can I get my three minutes?
Yeah.
It's like, I'll give you three or four minutes on that topic too, you know, but that doesn't always happen. But I think as long as we're okay with knowing we can continue to have the conversation around whatever that issue is, if it's something that you heard that was like, geez, this sounds a mess or this sounds foul, you know, talk to us. But I do think like Jay said, there's some things too that, you know, for us, I think it's a filter of saying, okay, you guys need to be aware of this one.
Yeah, and just sort of levels that in a way that crosses that threshold and then you just send that down to the board.
And it's.
Because email's not the greatest way to communicate either, so.
And it's always just that assuming positive intent that everybody's on the same page because it's like predicting the weather. You never know when a storm is actually going to kick up or when it's going to pass by because I look at some of the things, and this is just in a general sense, that have popped up at a building, whether it's a personnel issue or something else. And we're like, okay, we think that one's gonna hit the news and so we think it's gonna raise that level, so we better tell the board. And so we get all the details and then, right, nothing ever happens. And then something else will happen and we're like, oh, that's, that's not a big deal, there's no, right? So you just, you never know. And so it is sometimes hard to strike that balance because it might be a slow news week or it might be a busy news week.
Yeah, yeah.
And, so.
I mean, I think actually for us, the easy thing for us to do is just to pick up the phone. Everybody goes to this meeting, is there anything going on that I need to know before I walk into a public forum? If, if, if nothing has sort of crossed that threshold for y'all feeling, you need to kind of proactively let us know.
And, and one of the things that Matt and I talked about today, and sorry Sean, I know I cut you off, but I don't wanna forget, is that maybe something that we want to consider is that for some of those forums or some of those standing community groups that the board has leaned onto.
Where do y'all go?
We match an administrative liaison and so that, so that we never leave the board out there by themselves. At the same time, we never leave the administration out there by themselves. So if the administrator gets out there and they start talking, so well, I'm just gonna go to the board, Charlie can step in and say, well, you see Chase and I are sitting next to each other, right? So, and I don't know if it could happen for all of them, but it might be a ni, it might be a nice way to, again, it shows collaboration and it shows how, how we're thinking, but.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, that the importance of that communication is true both directions and finding the line in both directions. And what I'm trying to get is, you know, someone will contact me specifically and ask me to look into something. I feel like I'm a detective and I'm kinda going behind the scenes trying to find somebody out. Cause I don't wanna throw anybody else on, like, there's reasons they maybe don't want their name out there, they don't want, you know, they don't want it to be stirred in the pot too much, right? They want somebody to just hear them and look into something. And there's been times when I hear something and I'll go and ask a principal or something like, tell me more about the story. And I will not have told anybody in administration that it even happened. It's cause I sort of make the assumption that people are aware of things, right? That's why I'm saying it goes both ways. And I think it's fair for us to say, hey, I've heard that there's stuff going on in this area and I've been asked to look into it, just without throwing people under the bus and giving names and things like that, just to let you know that maybe I am going to go to a school and witness something firsthand. Cause that's what we get asked to do, I think, every now and then, like, hey, go, just go into school and see what it's like there, kind of deal. But I, I think we owe it to you to say, hey, this has been brought up and we're gonna do something, whatever it might be.
Well, I think one thing, and for whatever reason, well, here's me in a lot of different, you know, ways than a couple of other districts I've worked in. But I think one thing I, I see more here and it's probably, I mean, just to credit to you guys and how responsive you are and how connected you are to the community, you know, here in Iowa City, maybe in comparison to other places, but is how many times people will call you instead of us as administrative team, right? I think we see that as part of our job, is trying to keep those things away from you, right? But when they don't call us first and they, they call you, you know, we don't have a chance to problem solve it before it ends up in your lap. And so, you know, one thing that, you know, I would just ask, I mean, wherever you're comfortable to do it is say, hey, have you talked to Matt, Amy or Chase about this? You know, would you feel comfortable calling them and seeing if, and then if you're not happy with the response, that call me back? You know, I think that would be a, a really helpful thing that would also start to keep you from seeing the influx of whatever you might see that we're not even aware of, but.
And I did do that at least once, so.
What?
I, I have done that at least once.
Good. Cause that is our jobs, right? We get paid to do this, right? I mean, you guys are here to volunteer in service and you wanna be responsive to your community. So I'm, I'm not trying to suggest not talking to them and not hearing from them, but if there's something that we're closer to the situation on some level, right? And can probably have a greater impact on directly changing the outcome for whatever they're unhappy about, then we'd like an opportunity to fix that where appropriate.
Yes. And I, I get back to your point of just, we need to be open with you. We're hearing something, we shouldn't try to solve it, that's not our job. Send the people to you or just let you know this is bubbling and that you're so concerned and so you can manage it.
Yeah, I just feel like I can't ask you to do something that I'm not willing to do myself. I want you to tell me everything, but I'm not telling you anything, right? Like, that's not.
Yeah.
Good operation, right? So, I mean, if we wanna be more transparent about what's going on, or not even transparent, if we all wanna be more informed so we can better react to things, then who's all of us to share?
Yeah.
When things happen, I mean, I think you're gonna impact. The one of the things that always comes up is people want us to go visit schools because class size, this year specific, class sizes are big. And everybody wants us to come see how bad it is, right? We all know that.
Yeah.
Right? And I think sometimes the parents just want us to be aware of it and so we, we hear them, we're like, yep, class sizes are bad and we're really trying to make class sizes better, right? But I'm not going to be able to say, all right, we're gonna hire somebody for a school, why, in kindergarten? Look, I can't do that. So that's where it has to say, hey, we're being told that this particular area is a hotspot. But you guys hear that kind of stuff too, we've got like fifty hotspots now. But I think it's at least fair to say, here's the chatter about town. It is weird. You're talking about, our district is different. I think the sheer size of it covering all these different municipalities and we all are kind of owned by our own municipality, right? Pretty sure most of the people in North Liberty, if they have an issue, they're gonna call me, right? I guess Corvall folks might call JP. Iowa City folks got a choice, right? They gotta look around. But we just have these areas where people feel more comfortable reaching out to us as individuals than the administration and I think, you're right, I think we should say, hey, have you actually talked to anybody else about this? Or you came right to me.
And I don't want that to come off as a bad thing at all. Cause I'm, I'm glad they do. I just think there's some situations where it's like, okay, we'd love a chance to try to help that person with their, with their problem, right? And that would potentially take.
Fair response on our side is, I can help you get in touch with the right people that are gonna be able to work that situation.
Or even, I mean, I don't know, I always approach it, I'm happy to listen, but I also want you to tell your story to Matt. I mean, if it's a secondary issue or a building principle, I mean, I always try and redirect. But I kinda sometimes feel like I should at least listen. I'm not promising anything. I'll listen and then say that like, have you shared this with the people that actually can solve your problem?
Right. Cause that's an important organizational piece, I think, right? Because that's what our, what we work with our principals, trying to guarantee to the teachers that if somebody calls the principal, if they haven't talked to the teacher, we ask them to talk to the teacher first.
Yep.
Same thing, if somebody calls to complain about a principal to me, I say, have you shared this with the principal, you know, or if they have a chance to respond. So I just think that's a, a healthy way we build trust with each other, right, throughout the organization, so.
So going back to, maybe JP's concerned about whether or not, you know, entire body of principals are have bought into the equity plan approach, since I understand that you were pretty much thinking that most of them have.
Yeah, I, I think if you have a comprehensive diversity, equity, inclusion plan of this size and scale or even the one we just came from or a strategic plan, if you didn't have leaders bought in, they wouldn't continue to be here. I mean, that's, that's part of the issue and that's hard to say, but, I mean, that is foundational to our work. And so they have to be bought into it. I like what JP said about the gut level, how does it bother you? You know, one of the first things we started with this year with our secondary MTSS work, multi-tier system that supports was this idea of collective efficacy and we talked about that at one time, Charlie, but is, you know, do you think you can impact the problem? Does this problem bother you, first of all? You know, I think we have consensus that it bothers people, right?
Do you think that, you're, you're confident of that?
That it bothers them, yeah. I mean, they're, they don't like to continue to see, you know, the disparate results. I mean, especially for the amount of time and energy those people put into the system, right? I mean, they're working super hard, right? And they're here all hours and they're, they're really, you know, nose to the grindstone on doing it. So does it bother them? Sure. And then the second part of that is though, do you believe you can make a difference, right? Do you believe you can start to see different results based on some of the things we're gonna do, you know? And then once we're there, then it's about, okay, now what do I do to get those results, right? And I think that's the work we're involved in. So we're here because we wanna change the system, you know, we want it to work for all. That's one of the first things we start with is, do you believe all kids can learn at high levels? Cause all has to mean all. It has to mean everybody, okay? And so we start from that foundation and then we go to now, do you believe you can get different results? Now I think that belief, the job of the building principal is to go do that same work with their staff.
Yeah, and then, and then to the goal three E, to students, I mean, to, to them too. Cause the students are saying, I don't, I'm not comfortable, this doesn't feel good. And then I recognize a problem, well, can I do it? I mean, if you start getting that self-efficacy at the student level, that's powerful. And I feel like PBIS is a framework for kind of having those conversations and setting the values and reinforcing, I don't know.
Yeah. Well, I think improving, yeah, like you said, their, their self-efficacy. And again, we could go back to some of the system work we're doing on one of the academic pieces about, you know, what do they believe about their identity in that subject area? Do they, does the student believe that, right? Cause that's kind of the teacher's role is taking that and molding that, that image of the student, they can be successful doing that. So all the way down the system, we have to have that working and that's probably why it's hard.
But Charlie, the, the thing I would add to Matt, not to contradict Matt, is, but I think we would be remiss if we said that all of our principals are at the same level in their journey, right? That all of our, all of our principals, every, all of our leaders have different strengths. And some, their strengths more aligned with this work that we started, so they're out in front. Are there others that are committed? They believe in the work, they know it's important, but need more coaching on how best to approach it with your, with their staff? Yes. Doesn't mean they don't believe in the work. Doesn't mean they can't do it. It just means that they're not, they're not exactly where we need them to be to, to lead that work. And so we have to continue to, to coach and build that capacity of their leadership. Because they've got a lot of, they've got a lot on their plates and they might have strengths in another area that are really making their building go. So we need to give them the support in this area. And, and that's not unique to this piece of our strategic plan. We have building, we have, you know, I can tell you the strengths of a bunch of our different leaders. And so I think that's the piece of it. Are they all committed? Do they believe in it? Do they believe it's important? Yes. Are they all at the same point in their developmental journey? No.
I think that to JP's language of saying, it's systematic problems and then to recognize, wait, I'm part of the system, right? Cause it's really easy to say, yeah, there's problems in our system, let's fix the system. And it's a whole different thing to say, how do I fix me so I'm a better part to the system?
Yeah.
Right? And that's, that's a huge mindset change and that's where everybody's journey is probably a little bit different.
So I think that one way, that one place that we've recognized that and that the principals have, have reached out to a newer resource here at the ESC is some of the work that Laura Gray's doing. You know, her former principal colleagues know the role that she can play, know her strengths, and they invite her out to her building. And the feedback we get about the PD that Laura leads is tremendously positive. And so that's that self-reflection piece, right, for some of our principals knowing, this is important, we need to do this. I can't do this alone. I'm gonna call somebody out to help me navigate some of these conversations. And that's a strength of some of those folks. They need to get to a point where they can do more of that on their own. But to be able to reach out and bring some of those resources that we already have in the district, talks to their self, their self-reflection and their, and their continuing to build.
Then the expectation becomes they need to transfer those skills, right?
Absolutely, right.
Cause Laura comes out and is able to sit with them, show some of the skills, you know, needed to effectively handle those situations. And then just like anything, just like a principal coach and a teacher, a director working with a principal is, the expectation is that those skills that get transferred and they're able to do that on their own frequently. But Chase is exactly right. I mean, that's a great example of where, you know, they know they're the variable, right? But where they might need some help because they're a little different point in their continued outgoes.
And that, I mean, we would expect that, you know, as long as people have some sort of gut level belief in the problem, generally globally speaking, in their ability to affect it, they believe in their efficacy and they understand the situation and they have a growth mindset and they're willing to take help. I mean, I think that's, that, if we have that, I mean, that's a lot. Then, then we can go somewhere. I think, you know, the worry is you, you get those folks with a more of a fixed mindset or a more check the box mentality, a compliance-based mentality, you know, people who just, you know, it's same kind of thing. If, if, if there's new educational information about how people learn and you don't accept that and you're like, no, I've done it this way for thirty years, even though brain science tells us all sorts of things. Those are the folks, I think it's hard to see them maintaining in the system when, and it's all about mindset, right? It's like if a teacher was struggling and they need to be on intensive assistance, the ones who make it are the ones who embrace that. And they say, okay, I know I need help. I know I need these weekly meetings. I wanna make some changes and I'm open to it. And they end up doing well. And it's those other folks where it's just that really tough journey. And you sort of know all along, cause you're like, if, if you just take that, like, please, we're here for you. We wanna coach, we have some ideas. It's not my way or the highway, just be open to change. And that's, you know, and I, and that, and, and the, the easier part, that, well, it's not easy. The difference between intensive assistance is it's in a negotiated agreement and principals are at will. I know that's not, it's not easy, at all easy, probably even harder because you don't have a, something to fall back on. But it does give the organization more flexibility to be able to, to make some of those gut level and, and not gut level calls either, somebody, I mean, some of those where you kinda know that's going on and, and we're not seeing movement. And you can make some of those, and sometimes, you know, right, that's an adjustment. It's not like you're not gonna be in the organization. Maybe, maybe it rises to that level. And maybe it's just like, well, you're in the wrong spot here. And maybe there's a better spot for you somewhere else than.
And I think there's a couple of things when I make that comment. I mean, not only would it be a difficult relationship to continue from a supervisor to supervisee employee, but this would not be the right place for you to work. You would not enjoy your job. Based on the amount of things we talk about and the work we lead, this would not be the environment you'd wanna be in. I mean, and that's the hard part to probably relay to our community or even to you guys sometimes is how many of our conversations do revolve around this stuff? Because, you know, we could stand up and talk to her blue in the face, but when we don't see the results, sometimes that's also hard to probably think, you know, that we're either being honest or as transparent as we could about that. But, I mean, every meeting we have, every conversation we have goes back to the, is rooted in those things. And so when I stood up and presented that plan. And so, when I stood up and presented that plan to you and said, if it's not on this list, it's hard to, us imagine us doing it? I mean, I'm being honest from an academic end, you know, in that regard. So, it just would not be a comfortable place to be, because you'd be leading or trying to lead a bunch of work you're not believing in or committed to. I mean, it would not be a good experience for you on that level, so.
So, do you guys have a sense of, and I know it's big work, and you've been doing it a long time. I guess, you know, we have the list, we have six goals, so where do you see the biggest impacts? Maybe as an organization, I mean, as a board, you can say, hey, this is where we need your help. But where, you know, where do you think we could have the most movement of those six goals, where do you think we could have the, the biggest impact?
Or which, the organization, which of those?
The organization as a whole, the administration, the board.
Okay, here's our big, not the easiest thing to tackle, but the part where we focus our time and energy, we can see the most shifts. Is it like hiring, is it?
Chase is thinking of this, with the hiring plan, we need some resources to do that, but.
I've been looking at, I've been trying to look at most things in my life now, not even just school stuff, but at work and everything else, through this sort of MTSS framework, right? Finding the things that are good for everybody, right? And I look at our goals and I see, I like, you know, I like three, four, and six, right? The creating the culture and responsive policies and practices, and the hiring of diverse staff, and creating the environment, like, that's good for everybody, right? And then, one is very specific on reducing, you know, our achievement gaps, right? And then, reducing disproportionality and discipline, and number two, those are very specific things that I think, if you start doing stuff that's good for everybody, the other stuff takes less intensive effort, because you're already putting groundwork things in place. And, you know, we talk about, you know, from a principal or a teacher's perspective, you know, what can I do? I'm trying to look at these, like, what can I do as the board member, right? Those are the things I can directly affect is helping craft, you know, what sorts of policies and practices we want, and what type of school environment we are going to create, and that's how we are going to help. And hopefully, the rest of it falls in line, right? I don't think you ignore the rest of it, cause you still think of it in the MTSS picture, right? There's still that tip of the pyramid, it's not like you just lop it off and forget about it. But I think if you do those big picture things that are good for everybody, it makes those other pieces easier to accomplish. And so, that's where I would think the bigger bang for the buck is stuff that is good for everybody and stuff that we can actively.
And the stuff that's good for everyone is sustainable, it's like, it creates a new environment upon which we can build. And I mean, to your point on, we can reduce disproportionality by just stopping suspending kids, and us to not dealing with anything cultural, a sustainable standpoint. So, that's where, that base is so important, it allows us to grow and evolve in a sustainable way, sustainable change.
Yeah, we can suspend kids for defiance and disrespect mostly, has it, does it mean that that directly meant we have less defiance and disrespect in our schools? I'd say no.
Probably not.
Is it still good that we don't suspend them for it and send them home from school? Sure, right? But has that improved the environment? To answer your question, you know, I think there's, there's a lot of factors behind that.
So, do you guys have a sense of where we could, obviously money for hiring, but?
Because that's a big one.
But although, we have a hiring freeze last year, we still hired forty people.
Right.
So, so we're always gonna hire folks, so.
I was just thinking about your plan that you presented, like, there were some resource.
Cause we talk, if we, you know, if we want, you know, I think we always should, we go back to the research and look at what would be the most beneficial from, you know, an economic standpoint, grow your own programs, and looking alternative, alternative certification, and I was really disappointed, by the way, at DPO earlier this month, if you couldn't tell, when that guy started talking about license.
I was about ready to start saying, something when you jumped in, I was, oh, thank God, somebody had to say something.
Randy Richards.
Yeah, he basically threw down the whole idea of reciprocity with the argument that we heard from the, the guy at the ASB that, well, we don't wanna have all of a sudden this inflexible, these subpar teachers coming in.
Some race to the bottom.
He kinda gave the fear factor out there, and I just jumped in and said, look, we're committed to diversity, we're committed to equity, and we live in a very white state.
Yeah, right.
We are not going to be able to diversify our workforce if we don't look for individuals from outside the state of Iowa. And the more barriers we put up, which the BOE has done a fantastic job of doing, the harder it's going to be to recruit talent from outside the state. And I, and I kinda left it at that, but, sorry, we're on a, we're on a tangent. But I think that goes to it, as we talk about this, that we're going to have to look at how we recruit differently, and so, some of it's in our control, and some of it's not. But that's the same with all of these goals, right, that, that we can only do the, the parts that we can do, and, but there are some things we can do to change the mindset and change the shift about that we believe in developing our own talent, that we believe in recognizing our successful, you know, students of color that would wanna come back and nurturing that idea of coming back into education over the long run. And so, it doesn't, I can't give up my money here. It, it's not dependent on money, but from a sustainable standpoint, to do it, to start to scale it up, an acceleration standpoint, it, it, we do need that.
Well, isn't, isn't that the part of the plan that actually costs money? The other parts are not necessarily budget, big budget items, are they?
Not necessarily, no.
Yeah.
So, I, 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 I was really happy to hear you make that comment at DPO meeting the other, the other day, right?
I think the, the resource part of the other goals, Charlie, is, is honestly a shift in resources. And I think that's, when I talk about like pushback again from other things, like, it might not always be new dollars, but it might be spending our dollars differently, right? And where, what we decided to commit to and where some of those resources go.
Well, I don't care if that, cause we can control that, getting new dollars is something we really don't have a lot of control.
PD's important, right, and that's, that's a cost, whether it's, cost neutral, because we're doing PD and we just direct what PD there is. I think we've talked in the past that PD's the most successful when people are interested in it, so you can't just mandate, you're doing this one and nothing else, right, cause that's not always successful. But, you talk about how they're all interrelated, right? You look at goal six A of, you know, creating that shared district and community, understanding of what equity and diversity really means, right? That that helps us create an equitable, inclusive school environment, and when we do that, perhaps we can start retaining teachers and staff of color, right? And all of those goals help each other do that, so it is.
With what at the apex?
The, everyone's attaining their educational goals, you know, at high, at high levels. To do that in a sustainable way, you have to have the policies, you have to have the culture, you've got, you have to have the talent, you have to have the stakeholder engagement. I'm not sure where the stakeholder one would be, that would probably be one of the bottom ones too, but it is almost a, you could almost layer this in. So.
I mean, I think, you know, and not to diminish anything Chase just said, but, I mean, I think an easy thing we like to point to right away is number four. And I don't think four can be dismissed, right? But it's one thing we can like see the change in, and it feels like it's easier to affect change in that area, right? The, it's just gonna be really difficult, like Chase said, that, I think the most logical solution for a school district that wants to be diverse in Iowa is a grow your own program, right? I mean, using the people here, recruiting people from halfway across the country to come out there today at zero degrees. You know, we know that's an uphill battle for us, but we do need reciprocity, we do need those things. But I feel like people jump to that as our solution right away, because we don't really understand what these other solutions look like. And so, that one looks and feels easier to accomplish, even though it's very challenging, right? But I think when you.
That's actually, and that actually doesn't, I'm glad you're saying this, cause I'm not, just by diversifying our staff, doesn't mean we accomplish all these other things.
Right.
And, and so, and I know, and I know you're not saying that, but like, so I'm glad you're saying this, because.
A lot of people in the community are saying that.
Right, right, and so, I.
I think that.
Cause that's one thing, they don't, I mean, if we asked, you know, a lot of people in the public, what doing something about the opportunity gap for structurally disadvantaged students looks like, that's a tough question, right? I mean, that's a tough interim question about how we do that stuff for people that work in education every day. So, I think it's one that we just gravitate towards, and so, it's one we need to work on, and like Sean said, none of these can be diminished. That's why they're all in the plan as huge goals. But if we're really serious about work we can do, I mean, obviously, the policy has to be set here, right? And I think you guys have given us that, that's why you approved the plan, right? That's why we look at these different policies. But I mean, I really think we have to start with that, with that one and three, and trying to look critically at our system there about what is that culture? You know, that we're asking our, our students to experience every day, and then, where have we created, you know, system level issues that we need to try to undo, right? Because the structure is designed to get the results it's giving. I mean, and it will continue to do that until we change the structure of some of those things. And so, I think that's where we have to look at some of those pieces, at least on the academic end. I see number two, disproportionality, discipline, like rutina, it's a result of a lot of the other things, it's a symptom of the problem. You know, it's a, it's a symptom of all of those other things occurring.
So just, so, trying to reduce those numbers in and of itself is not going to produce.
We'd have them fixed by now if that was hard as it was, right? You know, if that was the solution, Charlie, we'd have them turned around, you know, we wouldn't wanna keep producing that. It's so much deeper than that, and that's why I say it's, it's the culture and it's those opportunity gaps. I mean, you look, I mean, if you would go and follow a class of kids around, or you did that thing where they want you to shadow it, and you look at the cohorts of kids, if you don't have music and more language scheduled into your day, I mean, you're gonna be in a very different cohort of students all day long than you are if you have music or language scheduled into your secondary day, right? I mean, if you hit a lower level math track, that's a very different cohort of kids you're gonna experience a school day with, all day. And so, those are the types of things that then produce discipline numbers, by a sense, right? I mean, they're not engaged maybe in the learning, they're, they're being exposed to maybe things they don't feel very confident about, you know, with a bunch of other people that aren't very confident about what they're doing, and then we see, again, the symptom pop up, really is.
The core issue. I've been right in the center of it, and if that's what it is, it's, it's, it's two different experiences for our kids. If you're on a high achieving track in the same building, and, and it results in the art, within the outcomes we see. So, here, and I know you guys, we're gonna do a lot of this big blow stuff, but on the, specifically on four, you know, I've said this from the board table, but I, you know, doing anything, scaling up, again, is gonna be hard. But could we, is it feasible to ask you to say, here's my perfect model, scaled up, and then, here's how we can start piloting? And, and what I imagine, to me, the thing that makes the most sense is helping folks, so if we wanted an alternative certification, like, use what's already there. So, whatever the university has already for alternative certification, and then, we find a way to pay for it. And I think the forgivable loan, right? You give us five years, we will pay twenty percent off of your loan, and after that five years, you're gonna have your teaching certificate and go wherever you want. And if you wanna leave before, you're just paying back the loan, it's not like we're demanding forty thousand dollars upfront, we're just saying, make your home payment. And it's probably more affordable for us to pay somebody's loan, you know, to, to do that, specifically targeting people in our buildings, currently employees in our buildings. So, and specifically parent educators, or support staff, non-teachers. I mean, I'm imagining to get five of those, one, because our numbers are what they are, we'll move the numbers a little bit with five people. And I'm imagining, just from anecdotal stuff I've heard, we have at least five of those where principals are like, I got one, I got one. Right now, I've got one. So, if we started, because I think we, that's what we can show the community, you know, here, and, and when we're at Equity Committee, that's just this last Equity Committee meeting, one of the women, who is a, a woman of color who works for the universities, you know, professor, saw the teacher numbers of our percentages of non-white teachers, and she said, well, is that what the district looks like? And it's like, five, five percent? And that was, I mean, she didn't, she just didn't know, she's like, aren't we only five percent non-white? And I was like, no, more like forty, she's like, oh, I mean, it was a, a brand-new piece of information, right? Yeah, and I don't know if she, maybe she doesn't have kids in that district, I don't know that she does, I, I don't imagine.
She knew, she knew the area?
I, I mean, I don't know, she actually lives in the university world.
It's just, just one of the university things, you know?
Yeah, I don't know.
So, your, the short answer is, is yes, and I mean, we've been having some ongoing conversations with the university, and so, part of it is trying to work with them about how, what that would look like and how to develop that, and we can continue to have that in long-term. But if you're looking at us using the alternative cert program and going that, yeah, we could start to, to map that out.
Cause don't they want it too, right?
They do, they do, and that's where they're very invested in, in working on it with us. It is funding, but we could look at a pilot, now, alternative is, Rappel is really just secondary right now, rather than elementary, I think, certification. But it's a starting point, and that's something we could definitely try to, try to at least look at a small cohort, and just get some seed money to get us through, you know, at least the first year, ten.
Well, we've talked about, like, if you think about like an FTE, sorry to interrupt.
Well, that's, yeah, that's absolutely right.
About your committing F, two FTE to this program or something, that's too less you have to put in the system, but that's your commitment, like you said, to the community to say, all right, well, now we've spent those dollars over here, cause we know eventually those two are gonna come back to us.
To come back to us.
Where I was gonna go is, so we've got a budgeting cycle coming up in front of us, we'll be wanting to look at what our priorities are for the next academic year. And is this the kind of thing that we wanna put on the table, say, can we allocate some resource for some pilot program, grow your own or whatever?
And of course, I'm gonna say yes on this, oh, wait, and I oversee the budget now, so yes.
But that's the form in which we can have these kinds of conversations for resource and prioritization for the next academic year.
Or on scale, when we know, cause then, you know, hey, it works. And that gives us a lot more opportunity to, I'm sure, if they don't exist now, there's a chance for this and that sort of thing.
It's just going to find us some partners that are, and if you prove you have a workable system, we're more likely to get some partners.
I mean, I, I think it's appropriate to talk about during the budget stuff, because that becomes very public.
Yeah.
And I think if you're going to, as you say, allocate FTE to the program, right? We've gotta tell people, look, we know class sizes are big, because we're short teachers, and they're gonna be a little bit big, because we're trying to spend some money in this area, right? Cause we're gonna have to take it, but this is why, right? I mean, that has to be out there very publicly, because all we're going to hear is why are class sizes so big? Can't you spend money on teachers?
Sorry, I have a building issue I have to go back to work for, so, first they stress the problems.
Do you need a ride?
Isn't that a new building?
No, I just text, we did, we opened up a new building, but it's part of my other building that has sensitive research in it, so.
Sprinklers aren't on, are they? Chase is good at that, I heard.
What?
Sprinklers aren't on.
No, not sprinklers, public safety, alarms, sorry.
The chimpanzees are getting out.
No, since it's on tape, I have to, it's on tape, the university does not have primates anymore.
So, so we're gonna cover some of these things in budgeting from a priority for things that need resource. I, I really like the idea of looking at the public forums that members attend and decide of those where we think an admin might be a good partner. And that's probably a really easy exercise, that may be Black Voices Project, it may be some other ones on our list that we just wanna partner up. And I think that's a really short-term thing.
Would Black Voices be receptive to having a member of administration there?
You went for a long time, your first.
Yeah, in my.
I think, I think they would, yeah, generally trying to ask for more representation.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's good, and actually, that starts pushing on the major goal.
Yeah, exactly, I thought about that too, when we talk about five in there, and then it's, you're already connected with them, and there's a feedback loop established.
I, I think Matt's, you, you, what you, what you were saying earlier is a, it would be a helpful thing for member, for members of Black Voices to hear, and, and other groups too.
Which, what?
Well, that.
When I was talking about the diverse staff versus the other goals, and where do we, what can we do?
And I also think, and, and to hear that changing the disproportionality and achievement gaps can hinge a lot upon the things we've already talked about, as well as changing how we're doing math tracking, which is not a, it's not a subject area, you know, that we talk about a lot in, in Black Voices.
We're gonna, it will be disruptive.
Well, yeah, but it won't be disruptive for kids of color, it actually will improve their educational outcome.
In the long run, but you are gonna be asked, I mean, I mean. In the long run but you are gonna be asked I mean I you know there's gonna be
There'll be a lot of you know the biggest thing I think will be around it is fear right I mean and that's what'll be rid of it there'd be fear that you know my student's gonna both sides I think you know for different reasons but that feeling's gonna be fear I mean it could be fear that I'm gonna be in a class I'm not as comfortable with am I gonna be able to be successful I think there's gonna be fear from the other side that maybe my kid's gonna you know be slowed down because now students aren't as ready to be in there you know there's gonna be fear from teachers.
How will I know that my kid is better than all of the other kids cause that's where that end is coming from I feel great cause my kid's super awesome and has beaten all the other kids and all of their scores right which you say it out loud it sounds terrible but that is the mindset of somebody with a very high achieving kid right I have high achieving kids and I feel great when my kid comes home with his test scores and they look great you know they give you a percentile right there right that's what the score says is you're better than ninety-five percent of the people that took this test right that's what's getting reported right and that's where you're gonna get that pushback right that but how do we know that our kid is super awesome anymore?
If they don't have this thing to point to right that I'm in a.
I think you're gonna get more pushback from that end than.
Well agreed and I personally I don't you know I don't wanna deal with that pushback I um for me it's about mastery I mean if you're just talking about education I want our kids to understand stuff that we say it's important that they understand at a high level I if I had my brother's algebra two would not be calculus would not be the top of math it would be statistics just cause like everybody needs.
Oh boy.
It's what we talked about.
I'm nervous I'm not gonna have to go to the class.
They finish right around algebra two or is it a more different looking algebra two class that has more statistics because that's what data would show us now is that you know the need for statistics is so much higher than some of those typical algebra two concepts you know but the heartbreaking story you know that I'll really be quiet so Dan can end the meeting if she wants to is a girl that we had this week come see a counselor that wants to be a nurse she's completed three years of math guess what her math her last math class was for us?
Algebra one B.
Which would be one B depending on how she did the sequence but did a math skills intro to algebra and then algebra class and she's a senior and so yes did that kid fail no are they gonna get a high school diploma yes did they have a ticket to go anywhere no not where they wanna go. Yeah.
So can we I I would like to see us include the change in how we're doing math.
Not yet. The reason I say not yet is cause we have a math team that's meeting about this and struggling with some of these very real things cause the part I didn't get to is fear is gonna be on the teacher end too right cause teachers wanna be successful and so is it gonna be easier to teach a continuum of wider kids no no one's gonna fool you on that it still might be the right thing to do but it's not gonna be easier so we have to identify supports for teachers supports for students when we come to you I I would just like to be a little bit closer to a solution we feel like we could have a larger conversation with because when it comes to you it becomes public right and then we need to be ready for that open conversation with everybody about the conversation we've been accounting for in all of those areas and be able to.
Can we consider it for to be ready by the next year?
I think by this spring what we have will have some things that we would like to try and that we'd like to even potentially see some movement on from some of our buildings we're gonna give them some aspirational goals that we'd like to because part of this is we'd like to pilot a few things before we commit to a solution right we'd like to say hey you know building A might be trying this to diverse or to collapse their math tracks building B might be trying this and we've tried some of those things this year but we've already approved a program of studies for next year that has the existing math tracks and we've already done placement of that that's the season we're in I think by the time we get to program of studies time next fall what we'd like to do by then is present to you a different model that would be implemented the following.
That's right. As deliberately as possible because otherwise we're pulling the rug out and kids and teasers will just be not know what to do we haven't ever done it like.
Might start getting questions now since we.
I say we bring it all back around to our district wide goals and visions and our portrait of a student and all that and say stop saying here's how we're gonna get your kids to pass all their proficiency tests to this is how we're gonna have your kids prepared for life after school. That's a very different thing.
It may be a different expression but those proficiency uh results are what the entire nation looks at in terms of.
Well but I would argue that if we do the other stuff.
Well that's okay if the number the proficiency numbers should change if we do the other stuff.
Right now they don't have a chance of changing the stuff we're assessing most of our eleventh graders on some of our eleventh graders have never seen right and never would see and so they don't have a chance of passing.
About third grade.
Well third grade is non set of the problem right that's where we start to identify where we have a gap.
Matt's taking all the time for me to make my final conclusion.
You get the last.
Thank you I actually appreciate that well no I know you are and that's what I actually was gonna comment on and whether it's around portrait of a graduate which I think is great or is that what we're calling it portrait of a graduate yeah or the work around equity or that I think tonight's conversation has been really energizing and as importantly it's been rather positive like we've talked about some things where we need to make changes and we need to focus on where we're not doing what we need to do but overall we've stayed very positive in how we're gonna do that work and I think in everything we do we need to find a way to change the tenor of the conversation because high achieving school districts focus on their successes and then build on those and so often we get dragged down into the negative side of it so I don't know how we do that but the more we can talk about our successes in the equity plan and how we're gonna remedy some of the things that aren't going the way we want to by building on those I think the the better we are and that's a like that's deep deep like second level huge change but it it's exciting to have conversations like this cause it makes me think we can change this narrative and and not ignore the things that we need to improve but really champion why people wanna come and go to school here you know and that.
Why they wanna come here and teach.
Absolutely yes.
Be on the school board.
Be administrators in the district right?
Nobody understands that. That's a good point.
So when we clear action items on that way we'll take a look at all the I'm looking I don't know I'm moving to Chase.
Cause I have the.
Actually maybe maybe Sean and I can sit with Steve and look at the list of all the committee assignments and public meetings next time we do an agenda setting and see how we can get some additional admin team to support those meetings.
I don't think it's a lot.
I don't think it is either and so we'll so we'll take that action item and get with Steve on that next. And then and then we'll make sure as we're doing our budgeting process that we focus where we think we need to put some resource to move some of the equity agenda items forward I mean I'm not sure anything else tactically coming from this conversation tonight other than also the commitment to communicate both ways you know we'll pick up the phone and ask questions if you're feeling like there's something we need to be aware of and I'll trust you to you know send us a note and say call us if you have more questions I just I think it goes both ways I really liked the way you said that Sean I mean we just can't see here in demand being given all the information we've gotta be thoughtful about where we're going what information we need and we need to be ready to ask for it.
And we could come back with the only other tactic we thought about was that goal three instead of goal one if you wanted to see that first or we could even try. I mean we've been working on kind of the goal one to break it out but yeah so maybe we'll turn our attention to goal three first not that like I said we're ending any of the work in any of the areas but as far as how we're gonna present it I'll simply have a pilot for our.
Oh don't trust me I we will we yeah we'll have that ready to go I'll dust that off. Oh we can do that.
So can you maybe communicate with Paul and Lisa about this meeting?
Yeah I'll send you to listen to the tape.
That's terrible but.
But I mean you wanna hear the conversation.
For anybody who is listening to this rewind all the way back and find a copy of our sea deep as JP likes to call it our plan so when we just say number one and number four and number three you know what the heck we're talking about. Cause I'm recording it's probably not gonna come through very well sorry.
Okay is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.